...pen to recognize 100 years of healthcare for Georgians and DeKalb Georgians specifically. Wanted to also participated in the African Americans Mayor's Conference that was held here, that was for 10, 10 years of the African Americans Mayors. And we had an opportunity to, as part of that, we had an opportunity to tour Tyler Perry's studios. And so it was pretty interesting because one of the things that he did was every set that he had a movie is there, which was funny because the Blue House was there. Right? And so I was able to meet with the Deputy Director Pittman from the State Department. And so I'm very excited with that and some of the other activities and programs that we plan to do. And then the other piece of my show and tell is I graduated from the FBI Citizens Academy. And so I encourage people to participate because it gives you a chance to learn about the FBI and all the different departments that they have within the FBI in terms of their violent crimes, their fraud, their health, all of those different areas, you get to hear about it and see presentations so that you have a better understanding of what the FBI does and particularly what they do in our area. And so their office is near, right near Mercer University here in Atlanta. So I would encourage people to find out because it gives you an opportunity to learn more about your federal facilities that are here in your area. And so May is move, move with the mayor. So I'm trying to exercise, y'all pray for me. Right? And so, but it's also to encourage you because the weather's changing. We want you to be a part of this. You heard our interim city manager talk about the pools opening, we have our different parks. So we're encouraging you, encouraging you to participate with that as well as with Bike Month, that's in May as well. You know, we spent all this beautiful money on these wonderful path. We want you to make sure you utilize that, especially this month. And it's Older Americans Month. And so we also want to recognize our seniors because they are our biggest contributors, they are our legacy, they provide so much to our community. And so we just want to acknowledge and recognize them and particularly in our community. And the other piece is Mayor Hammack, former Mayor Hammack in Pine Lake, used to do a Tot's Town Hall. And I promised her once she was out of office, I'd start the Mayor's Tot's Town Hall and get it going. And so we've had two meetings and it's been a wonderful experience because the kids are under the age of five. They sat up here where their fellow council, our council members were, they actually made a proclamation and that's what you see on the agenda. And so we're starting it early with them, you know, we're really starting it early with them to get them to understand democracy and what it means in terms of their participation. And so they had a wonderful experience of it. And so this is the book that they created from their experiences of being in this area. And so I want to thank the Chief for allowing some of the officers to participate with this. And I don't see Yolanda, but Yolanda has been key to making this happen and really participating with it. And we even have our own teddy bear named Clarky that the kids got to be, have a part of. And so it's just a way for us to make sure we're inclusive. And so as you heard from Councilwoman Bell, that we have the youth council and this is our early learning component of what we're doing for our kids. And again, remember 34% of our city's population is under the age of 18. So we have to be mindful of how we nurture those young minds, no matter what age. And so let's get involved, let's make sure we participate. And that should include in my report. And so with that, I'll move into public comments. Now, any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes and is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for a public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. And so, my city clerk, who do we have signed up?
We don't have anyone, your mayor.
We don't have anyone?
No.
Okay. I'll take that. All right. Going once, going twice, no one. All right. So with that, we will proceed into old business. Now, if you're going to talk about something that's old business...
No, I didn't raise this, but I wanted to...
Are you going to talk about something that's old business, though?
No, I'm not going to talk about any business.
Okay, oh, oh, go ahead. Okay, go ahead, make a public comment, okay. Vice Mayor Yasu. And as he comes up, as a reminder, don't forget to vote. Early voting is now until May 17th and elections is May 21st and you can do it at the Clarkston Library. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you.
I mean, now Vice Mayor, former council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I wish I could have done this report to you guys on the podium, but since the qualifiers happened after we had the meeting, I could not do it. But I want to use this three minutes opportunity to thank the community for the support that they have given me. And I want to thank my colleagues for all the support that they have given me. And I, I really feel missing my seat right here, but I don't know if I can change my mind. I don't know what you can tell me, I'm just...
Too late, man, too late.
But I just want to say thank you so much to the community. I don't take this lightly for taking this decision, but I really feel like it's an extension of our city. The schools are as important. So I feel like I'm definitely going to be serving you, just at a different level, but my, my heart will always remain in Clarkston. I would always remember where my life started, my children's life started. So my kids, I can say, DeKalb County and the city of Clarkston has been great to us, to my family. My kids went to elementary and middle school in here in DeKalb County and right now they already in college. So I really am blessed and thankful and looking forward to working with you guys at different capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. And see, former Councilman Yasu was modest because he didn't tell you why he was standing up here. He is running for the seat for school board and so he's the only candidate. So that's your school board member right there. So, and we're, we're grateful that we have someone in Clarkston and we, we're grateful to have someone who has truly been committed throughout every phase of education. And so we're looking forward to what you're going to do in terms of helping our community. So thank you, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move into old business and start with item 6A, which is to consider, to consider for approval, ordinance number 493, amending Chapter 3 of the Code regarding alcohol beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on premises subject to certain conditions. And who do we have signed up for that one? I think interim city manager, we had a list of questions or items. And so how did you, in terms of addressing those questions?
It was my understanding I was going to be given some time to respond back.
Okay. Okay, and I see Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think our, the general agreement we came to is we would get back, you know, we would come to this meeting with a list of questions, just as staff had specific direction in terms of what we were asking, what information we felt we needed to make a good decision on this, which would then allow our interim city manager to give us a more accurate time estimate. Could be mistaken on that, I think that was the intent.
Right. And I have Councilwoman Bell.
And I have a motion.
Okay.
So due to my colleague Perkins mentioning that there's still outstanding questions in regards to this measure, want to make sure that we adequately have all the information that we can to make the best decision. So the motion that I would like to make today is to table and defer item 6A to the Public Safety and Legal Committee. So here's the motion. I want to table and defer the consideration of the approval ordinance number 493, amending Chapter 3 of the Code regarding alcoholic beverages to allow late night sales for consumption on the premises subject to certain conditions to the Public Safety and Legal Committee.
A second.
Okay. Do we need to table and defer or can we just...
Yeah, I think table technically means to just sort of put it on the back burner with no specifics. So if we're referring to a committee, then that would, I mean, it's the same result.
Okay.
So the reason I say table is because we're taping it from the actual agenda and it needs to come back up. But deferring it to the committee is to get recommendation for it to come back up to on the agenda. But I can change my motion to just say defer and then we can defer from the committee back to the agenda if that makes more sense.
Well, I think it depends on what the council wants to do, right? So the, I think the way you made the motion would lead to the committee taking it up without a specific date for it to come back on the agenda, which is fine. If you have a specific date in mind, then you would include that, that we're referring this matter to the committee for further investigation and deferring this to our meeting on whatever month. Depends on how much flexibility you want to give the committee.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
You got something you want to say?
I was just saying, just as a matter of how the resolution is written, it sets up our advisory committees. So it would be, it automatically comes back to council 90 days after it has been referred to committee. So I think if you're, unless you're wanting it to be before 90 days, my recommendation would be to amend your motion, refer it to, you know, the committee of your choice. And then they have 90 days to come back to council with a report, you know, based on whatever scope you want to give them.
So we've already discussed this agnostically and we've had two meetings about it. And so my question, if you don't ma, if you don't mind...
No problem.
Is set to amend to figure out how much time would y'all need to adequately answer the questions and help, like, give us information so we can provide the facts from the committee back to the council so we can make a decision.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, so far I've only gotten one set of questions from Councilmember Perkins. I believe Councilmember Bell, you got your questions answered at the work session from Chief Hudson. So I would think if you could give us at least 60 days, we can go and research and provide as much information as possible regarding the list that we currently have now.
Okay. So I'm gonna amend my motion.
Yes.
So I want to make a motion to defer the approval ordinance number 493, amending Chapter 3 of the Code regarding alcoholic beverages to allow late night sales for consumptions on the premises subject to certain conditions that will be referred back to the city council in 60 days.
Is there a second? And you, you're committing, the Public Safety and...
Public Safety and Legal Committee.
A second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to defer...
Refer.
Refer, okay, I forget, refer. Refer the approval of ordinance number 493, amending Chapter 3 of the Code referring alcohol beverages to allow late night sales, sales for consumption on the premises subject to certain conditions, and that will be referred to the city council in 60 days. Is any further discussion? Ready?
Is that, so now my understanding is procedurally we're voting on the amendment and then we'll go back to the original motion, correct? Because we're, we're two motions deep at this point, right?
Yeah, we're two motions deep.
I think we need to withdraw that.
She can withdraw her motion and then we just keep it the way it is, the way.
So I withdraw the initial motion. The motion that stands is the amendment to refer to the Public Safety and Legal Committee.
Thank you. So we'll leave that motion as it stands now. Is there further discussion? You ready for the question?
I think, oh, I'm sorry, Madam.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think just to make sure that our committee understands, again, the, the options that we have. I think regardless of what information comes back, the three options that we will have as a council, again, are going to be to, you know, reject, you know, any form of this, you know, extension of late night sales, to, you know, be approve it citywide as is or with modification, or, you know, C to look at a specific area and say, hey, within this area, we think that this makes sense. So I do want to make sure, again, as we refer this to your committee, we do understand the implications of this, understand, you know, there's economic implications, there's public safety implications, there's a lot of stuff going on here. And so I will be, you know, interested in hearing what you come up with, but I want to make sure that we do a thorough job of this. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you. So the implications of it going to committee is for us to get facts on what is at stake, what is going to be the impact, so that we can all collectively have the same information to make a determination, right? The options that we have are to vote yes or to vote no on it. There are outside options that can be discussed, but that would be something separate, as if my colleague mentioned, enter some type of other district. But that would be an additional item that we would have to discuss that is outside of the late night ordinance that we're discussing here today that's going to be referred to Public Safety and Legal Committee. I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
I'll briefly respond.
Yes, go ahead.
So based on where the conversation has been, I think that's the whole point of referring it to committee. Maybe I wasn't clear, I think, and, you know, this is, again, this is one perspective. But I want to make sure that, you know, we're not, I do not think the ordinance as it stands has, has ultimately been successful. I think it does need to be modified. Some of the discussion previously per our previous meetings, Madam Speaker, has been to look at, you know, we brought up the idea of what if we looked at it, this is a zone, you know, everyone has said, well, we don't need to look at this as, you know, specific businesses individually, but, you know, is this going to be citywide, is it an area? So I think if the idea is to refer this to committee specifically to look at, does the, you know, the current, you know, modification of the code as it stands, you know, does this, you know, ordinance number 493 as it stands work, I think that would be incomplete. So I want to make sure that, again, scope wise, we're, we're not just focused on the thing that we have discussed. That's the whole point of extending this discussion, is to make sure that we're looking at all the angles of it, you know, and different options that we have available.
And, and that's fair to, to, to bring all of those points up. I think, because, let's just be real. The bottom line is you can vote it up or you can vote it down, the way it is now. But we can also, by having it go to committee, to look at other options to it and what ways we can enhance it in terms of any type of, you know, making sure in terms of compliances or other things like that. So it gives us a chance to say up or down, recommendation for zones or something else, but making sure in terms of overall complacency, we have that option by going to committee. So Councilwoman Bell, did you have something?
I'll be brief. There's still a lot of outstanding questions as City Manager Tammy Sattler Jones just mentioned. So I want to make sure that we have enough time to get those answers. We compile that with the information and facts that we received from the committee and identify best practices on how we move forward with these ordinances, comparing it to other cities and municipalities that do allow this, as we heard from in the last work session. And that's why it's going to Public Safety and Legal Committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? You ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion pass. All right. And we'll move on to item 6B, which is to consider for approval ordinance number 496, amending Chapter 2 of the City Code regarding administration to establish a new procurement policy and for other purposes. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Code, Section 2-5 currently requires all contracts or purchases of goods or services costing greater than $5,000 to go through the public bid procurement process involving publication in the DeKalb Champion. As I expressed during the work session, this has not been happening and, and this is the reason why we're here, making the recommendation. Of course, you know, having to do that, and we understand that that is something that probably goes back when the city had a strong mayor form of government. Now we have a council mayor, council manager form of government. The proposed ordinance would require a public bid procurement process for purchases in the amount of $25,000, but would allow this to be done through the state purchasing website, which is the modern way of doing things. This ordinance also recognizes a number of situations for which exceptions are made to the general rule. So staff recommends approval.
Okay. So at this time, I'll take a motion for this particular item. Yes, Councilman?
I have a motion to approve ordinance number 496, amending Chapter 2 of the City Code regarding administration to establish new procurement policy and for other purposes.
Is there a second? It has been properly moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 496, amending Chapter 2 of the City Code regarding administration to establish a new procurement policy and for other purposes. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I just think this is a necessary modernization of the bidding process, that the DeKalb Champion is just an outdated way. As a lawyer, I have to publish a lot of things in the DeKalb Champion. I can tell you, very few people actually check those and respond to them, and I'm sure it's the same for bids. So I'm glad we're doing this now.
Okay, thank you. And I'm glad we brought this up to make sure that we are moving forward and have our actual process in place. So with that, are you ready for the question? Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes.
And put your mic on. Thank you.
On the consent agenda...
We haven't gone, oh, oh, you want, okay, okay.
On the consent agenda, we have item 7B, which relates to procurement, and it is ordinance number 495. And, and I think there was a discussion about deferring that. And this is something that's very similar, and it's ordinance number 496. So I think it'd be helpful to all of us and to the citizens here to understand the distinction between those two.
Okay. I'll have the city attorney to do that for us.
Sure. So...
And turn your mic on.
I think mine's automatic. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, now we can hear you.
I don't have a button on mine.
Okay.
All right. So the, the ordinance that has just been moved to approve is a procurement policy, which refers to the mechanisms and steps that are taken by the city in order to acquire goods and services in a way that will provide a good value for the city and put guardrails to prevent fraud and conflicts of interest. And it is triggered when the value of the good or service is $25,000 or more. The separate ordinance for city manager spending authority is, contains a limit of $25,000. So for items that are less than $25,000, it would allow the city manager to use a different procurement process that does not require public bidding and will allow, therefore, the city to be more nimble and allow the city manager to carry out priorities and directives of the council without bringing it back to the council for approval of a specific contract or vendor in those circumstances.
And it also has her to report, or the city manager...
It does. In the details of that include reporting at the next meeting of each contract and purchase that the city manager has made that's of, of an amount over, I think 10,000 was the threshold there. And it also is, the reason that's being deferred is because we talked at the work session last week about beefing up the limit, ethical limitations on the city manager so that the person in that position will clearly be prohibited from doing inside dealing with relatives or persons that the city manager has a financial relationship with.
Right. And the other piece to it is that we have to have two readings as you relate it to the, one of the other ordinances that's also in consent.
Right. The, the city charter amendment is a precursor to the ordinance adoption for city manager spending authority.
Okay, thank you. Did that address everything? Okay. Is any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? Yes, Councilman Perkins?
Oh, I'm ready for the question.
Okay, all right, okay. All in favor to approve ordinance number 496, amending Chapter 2 of the City Code regarding administration to establish a new procurement policy and for other purposes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion pass. And now we will move into consent agenda. And for our community, just so you understand what consent agenda is, is that at the work session, we review all the agenda items. As a council, we have agreed that there's no further discussions and those particular items can move forward. And that's why we have the option of having consent agenda so that we can do them all at one time. And so with that, I will ask a council member to read each one for the records and then we'll have that motion. Not all at one time. Councilwoman, oh, Councilman...
I can do it if you want.
Yes, Councilman Carroll, thank you.
So I move to approve the consent agenda of 7A, to consider for approval ordinance number 494, to amend the city charter to authorize the city manager to purchase certain goods and services and enter into certain contracts behalf of the city. B, to approve for approval ordinance number 495, to amend Chapter 2 of the City Code regarding administration, to delegate to the city manager the authority to purchase goods and services and enter into contracts behalf of the city, subject to certain conditions and limitations. C, to consider for approval proclamation designated May 10th as Mayor Book Club Day. D, to consider for approval proclamation designated May 10th as Kids' Day. E, to consider for approval resolution authorizing agreement with Bowman Moody Enterprise L.C. for professional procurement services in the amount of 3,500 monthly for three to six months. F, to consider for approval resolution to renew Girma property and liability coverage for the policy period, May 1st, 2024, through April 30th, 2025, through GMA Property and Liability Self-Inurance Program funded through the general fund budget. G, to consider for approval of uses of the National Oprah Award Settlement Distribution to the amount of $7,757.06 received by the city. H, to consider for approval of resolution to implement increase of fiscal year 2024 sanitation assessment fee to $370. There's approved at the February 6th, 2024, city council meeting to cover cost of essential garbage recycling services for fiscal year 2024. And I, to consider for approval of contract with Integrated Science and Engineering, ISE, scope of work for MS4 permitting, the amount of $10,500 to be funded from the Stormwater Enterprise Program.
Okay. Is there a second? I just want to make sure for item B, you did say to defer that one.
I'm sorry, I may have misread that. I read what was in the sheet. Yeah, for item B, it would be as amended.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items from item A to item I. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will move into new business, which is to consider for approval the SPOLOST 2 projects list and changes recommended by the Housing and Infrastructure and Transportation and Environment Committees. Councilman Carroll.
Yes, so we had a good meeting back in April on the joint meeting of the Housing Infrastructure and Transportation Environment Committees, and we went through all of the SPOLOST projects and that were recommended, and we mostly accepted the ones recommended by staff. There were some minor changes in which we identified essentially that we were going to only, one of the parks at the Cobble Mill was not going to be done in this round of SPOLOST, and instead, that money was going to be repurposed for essentially repairing the previous SPOLOST projects and maintaining them, which there is some maintaining because there's, you know, different greenways and different roundabouts that require we need and other yard maintenance. Another change was just specifying that only the streets in the worst conditions, which were marked 2 through 4, would be repaved and $200,000 should be reserved for traffic calming, which was, you know, necessary. I think there's a lot of the streets that are going to be repaved where the neighbors have asked for traffic calming and different ways to make the streets safer. And this way, we can do that at the same time and have some... And this way, we can do that at the same time and have some cost efficiency while we're repaving. We can also make these streets safer for pedestrians and for drivers. And then the third, the third major change was just to add a hundred thousand to add a sidewalk onto Jolly Avenue South, which is down by where Christopher Woods and behind Willow Branch Apartments. And then essentially, that's a very dangerous area. If y'all have been back there, essentially, it goes up a hill and you can't see over the hill, and there's no sidewalk. There's a lot of pedestrians that walk on that street. So it would require an internal governmental agreement with the cap eventually, but I think adding a sidewalk to that street to connect it all the way to Roland would make it a lot safer. So those are the three major changes. And we already made the change to demolish the Forty Oaks House, but we also allocated funds to build a replacement for that that the community would hopefully like.
Okay, and at this time, I'll take a motion for this particular item. Yes?
I have one question.
Sure.
I know the last work session, we discussed that the people on the committee would discuss. Was there a discussion?
Yeah, we talked about the splash pad, and I think I worked it out with Councilmember Hood, that we did approve, we did approve leaving the splash pad on the list. So splash pad is going to come to Clarkston in near future. We're still figuring out the exact location for that. We're probably going to need to have a firm to do some sort of park study for us to figure out where the splash pad, what the best location for it would be. But we did leave the funding on it for that, so you can get excited for that coming soon.
Yes, Councilwoman?
There were, in addition to the location of the splash pad, there were a number of things that we wanted to include in a study of our park system and where would be the best places to make various changes and upgrades. And I'm pleased to see that we have a parks manager hired and that person be integral part of these discussions.
All right, I think everyone's happy with that. Yes, Councilman Perkins?
I have a motion if you're ready for it.
I would love a motion from you. What's that motion?
I move that we approve the SPOLOST two projects list along with changes recommended by the Housing and Infrastru- Housing, Infrastructure, and Transportation, sorry, Housing and Infrastructure and Transportation and Environment Committees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve SPOLOST two projects list and changes recommended by the Housing and Infrastructure and Transportation and Environment Committees. Is there any more discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion pass, and we will move to item B, which is to consider for approval a lease agreement with G and I X Industrial Georgia LLC for the lease of approximately twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten square feet of office space at the property known as seven thirty-six Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of sixty-two months. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so excited about this item. As you all have heard before, and we discussed it in the work session, the current City Hall and City Hall Annex building can no longer accommodate our growing staff, our existing staff. We are in desperate need of some new office space. We are in desperate need of increased parking. There's a parking challenge when you come to City Hall Annex, particularly in City Hall Annex. We have staff sitting in the hallway here in this building. Our police department is in the basement. We have flooding in our evidence room. And we do have the desire and the need to relocate to a better office space for our city employees. And so we are proposing to the council with the assistance of our, our commercial real estate broker who is here in the audience, Tommy Collins from T Dallas Smith, and also our city attorney, Stephen Quinn. I'm sure he's going to go more in detail, probably into the lease for you, but we are recommending approval for the lease to go into the new office space. If it's approved, we anticipate that it would probably take us maybe ninety days or so to get into it with things that need to be done. We are moving into a twenty-seven thousand square foot building. However, you know, the carpet needs to be replaced. There are a few things that need to be done, some walls moved, and you'll hear about those items coming up as well. So we are extremely happy, and we do hope that we will get council approval for this agenda item. So thank you. And I'll turn it over to Attorney Quinn unless, so you can talk about the lease specifically. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Madam Interim City Manager. I mean, I don't think that the mayor and council have a desire for me to walk through the lease in a ton of detail. So I'll stand for any questions, but I'll just say that since we talked about this at the work session along with my colleague Irene, we have double-checked everything in the lease and negotiated the final points with the landlord through their attorney, which included being sure that we have reserved parking in the front for the public and administrative employees and reserved parking in the back for the police department, which specifically includes being able to fence off and store public safety vehicles in that back area. We've ensured that in the very unlikely event that the city breaches the lease and is dispossessed, that the landlord will appropriately take custody and preserve our government records. We have gone through every section and made sure that we struck the best deal for the city in terms of the legal language that y'all don't want to get into, I'm sure. It was a process. The landlord worked with us in good faith. We were very much a different kind of tenant than they're used to dealing with, and so we had to explain some things to them, but it worked out fine as far as I'm concerned. I think if you have, if you want to talk about any specific business terms, you know, I know the council was aware of those on the front end at the LOI stage, but I think that maybe Mr. Collins would be the one to ask about that. And if you have any questions about the, any legal issues or details, then I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Are there any other questions from the council? Yes.
So I guess I think I support the lease. I think everybody in council realizes we need the space. So my one concern is we just got, you know, a few hours before this, an estimate that on top of the lease, it would be over eight hundred thousand dollars of other repairs and costs in terms of moving. And that number actually gives me more pause than the lease, which I think is a fair basic lease. So I guess I'm saying if we approve the lease, is it possible to still do this lease and then pare back the other list? Or if we approve the lease, we basically locked into, we have to do the full eight hundred thousand? That's kind of my hesitation.
So I, so whoever can answer?
So, well, I'll answer it from a legal perspective.
Legally, I know we don't have to.
Exactly, but you wouldn't want to unless you were gonna, depending on the advice you get from your city manager, then you would, I mean, you know, these are presented in a certain order
Right.
for that reason, is all I would say.
Right, and that's, that's why I had probably a plethora of questions in terms of what that overall budget would look like for us to do the move. And that's something in terms of us moving forward. You know, everybody's on top of, everybody on top of everybody, but we also have to be fiscal stewards as well. And so, Councilwoman Bill?
Yeah, so I don't have any issue with the lease, and I'm sure that Stephen crossed his i's and dotted his t's. The only, one of the biggest concerns that I have is that we don't own the space, and we won't own it, right? We're renting it. And so when I think about redesign and the renovation, I, I guess it's a legal question too, and I'm sure y'all have discussed it. I hope so, Stephen, with the owner, of how much of this we're going to get back? If we invest, like, what does that look like? And what's the return? Because we're investing in this space because, of course, it wants to look nice for our residents to come in and patronize with our staff. However, it is a space that we rent. We don't own it. So like, it's like putting money into a hole that we're never going to get anything out of. So was that part of the discussion? And if it wasn't, I understand, but when I look at these large amounts, five hundred thousand, you know, a hundred and seven thousand, like, you know, that causes me pause as my colleagues have mentioned.
Right, well, so that was definitely discussed internally with myself, Ms. Sallar Jones, and Mr. Collins. Now, as far as what legally, I can answer your question, what happens at the end of the term, which could potentially be extended beyond the five years we're committing to now with the mutual agreement of the city and the landlord. But what happens at the end of the term, and this is Georgia law, essentially non-negotiable with a landlord. We keep our personal property. They keep, which may mean demolishing and removing for the next tenant, what's called fixtures. So fixtures, like the word sounds, are things that are attached. So we're going to go in there and put in new windows, doors, and walls? We can't take any of those with us. Another one of the items on the agenda for consideration is security, special security doors, since we have a police department. I don't think we can take any of that with us. But things like personal property, we can take with us, which would be computers, desks, chairs. And, you know, you could run down, you could throw items at me, and I could tell you which one I think they are. But that's the basic outline of how it works in a standard, you know, commercial triple net lease like this.
Yes, any other questions?
If I may?
Yes.
The security part, of course, I know that's a necessity. What I'm saying, and I know these are estimates, so let me say that first and foremost. Like, I'm aware that these are just estimates. The security part, I don't have any concern. We want to keep everybody safe and the staff safe as well as the residents that are coming in and out. It's some of the commercial renovations and the investment that we will make, and that is my pause. But I know this is an estimate, it could be cheaper. I'm sure, hopefully by the time we get here, we can figure out a cheaper plan or figure that out. But I know that these are true estimates as of today, but they could change tomorrow. But that is my pause. Some of the investment we're making and not getting any of it back, or we don't have any agreement with the landlord in regards to how much of that they're going to support. Because it's still their establishment.
Right.
Right, I mean, I guess if I could just say one more thing about that without belaboring it. Every business, and for purposes of this, the city's a business. I know we're not, but for purposes of being a tenant at this space, we are. Every business customizes to some degree the space that they're renting. And every time they leave, those customizations are left behind because they're part of the building now. So it's not unusual, but it's certainly a legitimate concern that you're raising. But I don't mean to suggest any difference. It's just as far as, it would be impossible to negotiate a lease where you could take the windows and doors with you. You know, I don't think we should assume that the landlord would even consider that just because that's not how these, that's not how leases are done.
Right, I mean, I get that. I just think, you know, I've negotiated some leases in my day is that usually when you make major improvements to the tune of like eight hundred thousand, it's because it's a very long-term lease, like twenty or thirty years, that there's going to, the tenant will benefit from that improvements for a long period of time. Whereas here, I'm kind of looking at more of a short-term, five-year lease. And I know we need to make safety improvements. I know we need to make police improvements. But I just don't know that we need to make eight hundred thousand dollars improvements.
Right.
I, yeah, I don't claim to be able to answer that.
That's not a you. Thank you for your part.
Unless, I'm not asking for legal opinion, I understand.
Right, and I think, I think where a lot of the pause is these infrastructure changes in the area that we're mentioning. Because I'll just be candid, when we did the tour, it was kind of like you saw the areas around the perimeter and not necessarily what would inflate that cost that gives me great pause for this piece of it. So I truly understand, and that's why I wanted to see more of a comprehensive list. And thank you, City Manager Jones, for giving this to the council because, you know, we need to be realistic in terms of the decision that we made moving and the fact that these buildings until, unless we do something else with White House, whatever, we still have to maintain all of it. And so what does maintain all of that looks, look like? So thank you for that, and I want you to comment. Son, you kind of had a comment, look.
Well, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure, and if you will allow me, I don't know if you want me to do it now or in another section of the agenda, just to kind of walk through these numbers with you. Because even though you see an eight hundred thousand dollar number, you know, I want you, the council, to keep in mind, we budgeted some of these things in the current fiscal year. We shared with you that we were going to have expenses associated with the move. So I hope this doesn't come as a surprise. I realize the number is high, but, you know, these are things that we need to do to keep our staff safe. We need to make these type of improvements. We're not just doing it because we want a Taj Mahal. We are doing it because they are necessary. We visit other cities that did this before. They spent probably, what, three times more than what we did or proposing? And we would never come to you with that type of estimate. But these are just kind of the bare minimum. And again, they're estimates, subject to change.
Right, and, and to staff and everyone who did the exploratory information, I just want to say thank you for that, for getting this data for us. Thank you for that. I, I just, I take pause because it's somebody else's money. And I just want to make sure as we're doing this, we're being fiscally responsible in terms of how we handle this. And it's not to say that moving forward is not a good thing, but I just, I always take reservation when you have commas in, in, in a decision like this. And so it's not, not anything in terms of not wanting to move forward. It's just a lot when you see it on paper altogether, right? And so with that, Councilwoman Bill?
Okay, Stephen, you know, I have another question. My question is centered around these drawings. Okay, I'm trying to cut costs. These drawings will belong to the building. Their outline of what it looks like. You sure they don't want to work with us on those?
You, you mean the?
Mechanical, engineering drawings.
The plans to build out? We never had that discussion. I, so I can't say that I'm sure. And not to put him on the spot, but that might be a good question to ask Mr. Collins. Because he, you know, he negotiates the financial aspects of leases, whereas I negotiated the legal terms.
Thank you, Stephen.
And he's coming to the mic. Give him a second.
Hello, we did negotiate the landlord making a contribution of six dollars a square foot. Just give me one second. So the landlord is contributing a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the build-out.
Yes, there you go.
That pays for the drawings, Stephen.
And if you, if you look at it from eight hundred thousand, let's just say the number is eight hundred thousand, and you divide that by twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten, that's thirty dollars a square foot. That's way below the average of a build-out of this nature. I mean, it could easily go up to seventy-five dollars a square foot, easily. So when she said, I'm sorry, when she said that other municipalities triple the number, I mean, I see it every day. I see it every day.
Yes, I'm going to let Councilwoman Hood, and then we'll.
Yes, I share many of the concerns of other council members, and I think part of it is getting this information at this point and the numbers being so much higher than our estimates. And I understand estimates are just that, they can change. I would like a little more time on this. I would ask if there's the possibility of some, as they say, value engineering. Getting back to Councilmember Carroll's remarks about this as a five-year lease, and this is a lot of money to. And this is a lot of money to put into it. Also, is there a possibility of doing some of this this year and some of it next year? Is there? So I know that, that the issue is that this is, this is not a Mercedes-Benz or Cadillac of the renovation.
Absolutely not.
But I, I support the lease. So this is not about approving the lease. But I do wonder about approving a lease when we haven't come to final terms about what is entailed in the build-out. So I would just join other council members in their concern.
Can I respond to that, ma'am?
Yes.
I mean, you know, we won't know that until we begin the process of specifically the design work. Then that would be the chance for us to do the value engineering.
Can you explain that?
Well, for example, we are working with a, or we would like to work with, let me rephrase that. We would like to work with a state contractor to do the, be the general contractor. And this person is on the statewide contract, as I mentioned during the work session. We will work with them and share with them what our goal is as far as the construction aspect. They will come back with a number. And then we can say, okay, we don't want this. Then they'll reduce that number. We don't want that, then we'll, they will reduce that number. I'm not a general contractor, so I hope I'm explaining that right. But what I mean is, you know, until they put something on paper for us, then we can begin to value engineer. But many of these things are just really walls and doors. As I mentioned, when you guys came for the tour, the designated area for the lobby, we have to put up doors to control the access for the public, being able to wander all the way through the building. That is a safety condition that we have to do for our staff. We're choosing to add a different front door location so that the public will have access to the restrooms and not have to wander all the way through the building. Again, that's simply a door and a wall that's being put up. For example, our court, we have to have some type of glass and counter space, like we have here, for them to do interactions with the public. And we were also gonna do that maybe on, you know, for the city hall side of the building as well. These are all safety-related things that we're proposing. Can we value engineer? Absolutely. Because we have come too far. I don't want this council to change your mind about this. We really do need this building. And whatever we need to do, we will do it. Yes, we can phase it in over a few years. For example, the fence for the back of city hall where the police department is, you won't see a number on here. Why? Because we're proposing that we do that in the fiscal year twenty-five. So we could potentially be in the building six months with no fence. But that's okay, because we're gonna, you know, we're gonna handle other ways of security. But in order to keep that expense down, we can choose to do that at a later date.
Okay. And I'm gonna...
City, may I just finish my...
Finish your thought?
Okay. I don't, I am not proposing that we stop.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not proposing that this isn't needed. I am, I am just concerned about the costs and whether there are opportunities to get those costs lower. And so you mentioned about the court. So a decision has been made that the court staff will be in this building?
That is our recommendation, because if they remain here, they won't be here in the police department. And you know, with court, there are always things that come about. That would, I'm strictly talking about the court staff, the administrative staff. We will still hold court in this location. But the staff themselves will be in our new existing building where they can have better working conditions. We have two people sharing the same office in court. And from my understanding, I think they've been doing that for years.
Right. I, I knew that discussion was taking place. I didn't know the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Bell.
So I just want to, just so, just so my colleagues are clear on my perspective on this. I definitely want to move forward with the lease. I do think that the design and the construction and innovation can be phased in. And so as a result, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to consider for the approval of the lease agreement with GNI X Industrial GA LLC for the lease of approximately twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten square feet of office space in the property known as seven thirty-six Park North for use as a city administrative space for a term of sixty-two months.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve a lease agreement with GNI X Industrial Georgia LLC for the lease of approximately twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ten square feet of office space at the property known as seven thirty-six Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of sixty-two months. Is there any more discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed. All right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Collins, I think you can sit down. All right, thank you for all your work. I can tell staff is enthusiastic. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. We'll move to item eight C, which is to consider for approval a contract with Pariani Construction, Inc., a Georgia statewide contract number nine-nine-nine-nine-nine, dash SPD five-two-zero-two-zero-zero-nine-zero-one, dash zero-zero-two-zero. And the Gordian Construction Contract Number GA, dash eight-zero-seven, dash zero-four-zero-eight-two-zero, dash PAR, under the Sourcewell Contract Number for the design work to renovate some areas within the building known as seven thirty-six Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of six months in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand, eight, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Interim City Manager, Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. This is regarding, it's Pariani Construction, and they are a statewide contractor. And we are proposing that we go under contract or piggyback off of this state contract in regards to the renovations or of certain areas within the building. For example, as I mentioned, the walls and, and doors. And they would be responsible for the design phase only. So this one hundred and eight thousand dollars is strictly for the design. As I mentioned, they will go through, they will do a design for us. They will provide us with a cost of what that will be. And then, you know, we can go, start from there with our value engineering process. But, you know, it is our intent to be fiscally responsible and to, you know, if it, if it doesn't fit the budget, you know, it would not be our recommendation to do it. So many of this is to update the flooring in the building. As I mentioned, the carpet is old and outdated and needs to be removed. And that would be for the demolition of the carpet, the current flooring. Add updating flooring. We mentioned that we're going to have a nice lobby area. We want to have some type of flooring that can be cleaned and keep down germs and other things. Possibly some new lighting in the building where as needed. A new door, a lobby area, as I mentioned previously. Secure areas for property and evidence for our police department. And, you know, increasing, renovating as needed, conference rooms. Our police department is looking at an emergency operations center. That's something that we don't have here in the city of Clarkston that we feel like we need. Adding a wall in the city manager's office and a door. Construction of secure counter areas in our main lobby for our court and for our, our city hall staff. And as I mentioned, you know, safety is a top priority. And these are the reason why these renovations are necessary. And again, you can count on us to make sure that we try to keep it as low cost as possible.
Okay. Okay, thank you. At this time, council, is there a motion for this particular item? And then we can go into discussion.
I have...
Yes?
I have a question, but do we need a...
Sure. We can go ahead and just do a question and then go into a motion. It's okay, I'll be, we'll be flexible.
Does the a hundred and eight thousand dollars include the issuance of construction documents?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it does, yes. It is in column four and five on this sheet, where if you count the, the columns, the facilities, the redesigned services. On here is listed at one oh seven, nine, my eyes are full of me, nine-five-nine. See the section in green?
Any other questions?
Does this include the design of like the external areas? I saw that they included in the budget some of the outside, like parking changes and islands and things like that.
Is that including the outside, Ms. Dixon?
I'm sorry, I couldn't get a question.
Okay, so I saw in the spreadsheet that we got today that there are changes for the external area as well. That, you know, there are like some sidewalk tie-ins, parking island with a curb, et cetera. And a new entrance and a removal parking lot area. Is that included in all this?
Yes, sir. So the design, yes, sir. So the design itself, and then the reason why we have to have the design is because it's gonna have to be submitted to DeKalb County as well for code. If there's a fire in that building, they need plans to be able to know that we put up a wall. So they need to be able to know where things are, how it changed. And so, yes, the design for the building to include the things that we're gonna do outside, if approved, is a part of this design. And it could come in under this amount. This, this was their estimate based on what we're asking them to do. But it does include re-engineering the front area for the door as well as fixing the sidewalk, which was what was recommended by our city engineer.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Bell?
The only question I have in regards to the estimate is the timeline. Did they, did they say the...
Yeah, they told us that if we can get it approved tonight, they could have us a design within four to six weeks.
Thank you.
And then I do want to make you guys aware that everything we would be doing, we would be involving the building owners as well. They would be at the table with us so that they will know what we're doing, proposing in the building.
Okay.
Provided that they have to approve the build-out.
Yes.
And they won't unreasonably withhold that approval.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bell, and then Councilman Perkins.
So then, City Attorney Stephen, you said that the owners have to approve it. So they're going, we're gonna give them a plan of some sort. They'll give buy-in and input in it, and then they'll go and approve. But that's before they actually start with the build-out process, right?
That is exactly correct.
Okay.
And there are some of the basic details that the city manager mentioned tonight are already mentioned in the lease, as far as what our build-out's gonna look like. So, and we've also discussed this with them. So we don't anticipate any problems there.
Okay. Councilman Perkins.
I have a motion.
Okay, let's go.
I move that we approve a contract with Pariani Construction Incorporated, a Georgia statewide contractor, number nine-nine-nine-nine-nine, dash SPD, dash five-two-zero-two-zero-nine-zero-one, dash zero-zero-two-zero. And the Gordian Construction Contract Number GA, dash eight-zero-seven, dash zero-four-zero-eight-two-zero, dash PAR, under the Sourcewell Contract Number for the design work to renovate some areas within the building located at seven thirty-six Park North for use as the city's administrative space for a term of six months in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Councilman Carol?
My hesitation is just that if we do this, I feel like we're committing ourselves to all these changes. And I'm not convinced that every single change is necessary. I'm not convinced we have to paint the walls for safety. So there are some things in here that I don't think that we have to do or that we don't have to do this year at least. So I can't support this motion as it's currently written. There, although there are obviously design parts that are needed. I don't think everything in here is needed.
Okay, is this, let me ask you this question. For this particular motion, I mean, for this particular item and contract, it is for the overall design, is that not correct? But it doesn't say that we have to do these items.
But why would we pay someone to design something that I don't think we should do? I mean, that's, that's my fundamental question.
If I may?
Yes.
I think that's, I think it's a good question that Councilman Carroll poses. I do think, from what I understand from the discussion, is this is looking at all that, we're hiring somebody to help us think through all the different pieces that interact, including fire code compliance, everything else. We still have to approve a contract for construction where we can break down things. But this will have someone who's, has the professional knowledge needed to examine all the details, come back to us with actual design schematics, actual details, including paint, everything else. My assumption is we could also, I think there is value engineering included in the contract. And I was also looking through some of these scope of work. It also includes conversations, constant communication with a client, where I think we could communicate some of these desires. You know, whether it's saying, hey, we'd like some criteria, you know, to say, here's stuff that's absolutely necessary, here's stuff that's kind of necessary, and here's stuff that, you know, it's up to your discretion if you need to cut costs. Does that, would that change my colleague's opinion on this at all? Or do, or would you like to amend the motion in a way that gives you more confidence?
I mean, I would just like to see like a stripped-down version of this. Like, I know we need the public safety changes, right? I don't know that we necessarily need to, you know, paint every single wall, that we need to create this, you know, curb parking that is gonna benefit the land property over the long term and not necessarily provide a giant benefit to us over just a five-year period. I don't know that, you know, we need to repair every single section of the carpets. I walked through it, there are some parts that are bad, there are some parts that are not as bad. So there's just parts of it where it's like, these are things that'd be nice to have that I'm sure will benefit the property over the long term, but is not necessarily, I think, the best use of taxpayer dollars. Whereas there are some things that are absolutely essential, right? The security is obviously essential. You know, the security, the evidence room is essential, like those things have to be done. But there are other parts of it that I just don't think are absolutely necessary.
And to your point, aren't there some allowances that we have for some of the things in terms of the carpet and some of the, like, design stuff in terms of paint and other things that is part of that lease that were also included?
Well, they, they gave us a tenant improvement amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for us to put towards those type of things. And we did not show that on here. So that would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand that we would be reducing from whatever the overall estimated cost would be.
But we could also use that hundred and sixty-five thousand for things like fencing and stuff, right?
We could, but I think that our chief may have another option for us. I'll let her speak on that.
We can really wait on the fence in the back. We share that with utility, and they're there during the day anyway. So this fence would only be locked really at nighttime. My officers are gonna be in and out anyway. So I have had conversations with the team, and we've decided we really can't wait till fiscal year 2025 before we look at putting the fence up.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, I have a question for Councilmember Carol. How, what way would you approach scaling this back or changing it or whatever? Would you want, say, an ultimate build-out? I think we probably are committed to all of the safety features. So those are not optional. So other than having the value engineering done by the contractor that we're speaking about, how would you propose that we approach this?
I mean, so my approach would be just that for this year, we only do safety features, essentially. And that, you know, if we need other changes, we can, you know, do them, do them, we can look at doing them later. look at doing them later. But I just don't see the need to do non-safety features in this fiscal year.
Stephen.
I was just going to volunteer that while you, the council would not want to engage the design vendor if you weren't going to do a substantial amount of the build out, that just because you get the plans doesn't mean you have to engage all of it, you know? So I think that decision could be made when a contract to build out comes before you. And it'll have, rather than an estimate, you know, an exact total and components where things can be put off for another day.
Does that address some of your concerns?
I mean, some of it. I just, I just feel like that, you know, if we limit the design for the safety features, then that's what I would feel comfortable voting to approve. I don't feel comfortable voting to approve a design for things that I don't think are necessarily needed in this fiscal year. And the rest of the council disagrees with me, that's why we have democracy and votes and all those good things.
Absolutely. So thank you for sharing, and unless there's other discussion, yes, I'll let interim city manager Jones and then this.
Well, Mayor, I was just going to mention, we are just asking for an amount not to exceed. Would you be open to the not to exceed amount? Or is there a number that you want us not to exceed?
I mean, I don't know what the amount would take to just do the safety portion of it.
Yeah, we, we would have to get an estimate from them.
It would have to be like a different estimate.
Yes.
So I can't just like make up a number that they could do it for this amount. I don't think that would be responsible.
Okay. And I see Mrs. Cameron jumping.
Yes, city leaders, if I may, in the planning department, if we, if we, if we accept the design as proposed tonight, again, we can phase in the construction part. But if we limited, we would have to go back to design later on, and cost may be more. So I would just ask that our leaders consider that. And then again, we don't have to build out exactly the way, you know, we would get the plans, but we'll phase it in. And that information will be, will be brought to you. But just think of cost, you know, going back to a design and getting another phase, you know, brought in would be costly. Instead of building upon what we've already have, we can get it all at once. And, and, you know, it may turn out, we may not need to do all of that. We've certainly told the city manager that we will go in and do the cleaning and painting walls if we need to. We just need to get out of the building that we're in right now. So do know that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cameron. So Councilwoman Bell.
So the only thing I'll say is, I hear my colleagues' concerns, right, and that I'm reflecting on it. My, when I look at the contract though, it does say it's a year. Do y'all see that, y'all? That this is a year with this same firm? So I think that gives us time to either like something or don't like it, but at least we don't have to go back and forth and do amendments and create new contracts because we're in it for a full year.
Yes.
If that, if that helps. And I think, this is just for the design phase, but, and, and I think Tammy mentioned it's up to this $108,000, right? But, I mean, they could do a first phase of it to, Councilmember Carroll's point, around the safety. Now, the safety does get a little wonky for me and perplexing because anything can be considered a safety measure, which, I mean, it's at the discretion of whoever is advised, and this is for safety reasons. But what I will say is that I think that us going ahead and getting designs and then figuring out what we have or what it should look like, and then how much we are willing to move forward outside of the budget is a start. And I think that's necessary. And then maybe Councilmember Carroll not targeting you. I mean, I appreciate your point.
The one that's in, I said.
No, no, you're fine. I mean, it's causing me to reflect. But I think that it gives us conversations in regards to what's a safety measure that we're not thinking out, we're not thinking about outside of the fixing, outside of some of the measures for chief. But other things that are necessary to get inside of the building, outside of the building, and then just like safety for storage of records that the staff holds. So I think that, I think that this is, looking at the terms and agreements that we have here, because it's for a whole year, we can go back and forth with them, it won't be a change order process costing us more money long term. I'm okay with moving forward with this.
And so I would be okay if we emphasized that just the first phase of design is to be focused on the security aspects.
Okay.
And then we're not painting a bunch of design to like repaint things like that.
And, and Councilman Carroll, as everyone on this council has an opportunity to voice your concerns, and so we appreciate that. And so that's why, again, we can leverage the fact that we can do this from a phased approach in terms of the overall concept and design. But to our staff and their expert opinions, you know, if we do the bare bones and then have to turn around and get change orders, that's, that would be substantially more. So I appreciate you emphasizing those points to ensure that we potentially look at it from a phased approach to do the safety pieces to it. But then also to have that contract where we can look at everything holistically to then be able to break it down. So thank you all for the discussion that you have.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that if it's directed that way. I don't have a problem with a year-long contract. I do agree with the staff that there are benefits in terms of cost effectiveness versus having to go back to a different planning firm later.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Hoot.
I think the contract is for six months. I think the contract is for six months. According to the agenda item.
If you go down in the actual contract though, it says from April 19, 2024 to April 20 of 2025.
I think that's for the state of Georgia, Councilmember Bell.
Oh, geez. All right, well, I'll take that off. It's a six-month, not two years. I'm looking at my own contract, sorry.
But that's still a substantial amount of time for us to make sure in terms of the design. So if there's no more discussion, are you ready for the question? Okay. All in favor to approve a contract with Pirani Construction Inc., state, Georgia State, And Gordian Construction contract number GA-807-040820-PAR, under the Sourcewell contract number for the design work to renovate some areas within the building located at 736 Park North for use as city administrative space for a term of six months in the amount not to exceed $108,000. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, still pass, we had three. All right, motion passed. Thank you all. And we'll move to item D, which is to consider for approval a contract with Southern Computer Warehouse Inc., SCW Inc., a Georgia statewide contract number 99999-SD0000172-014, to provide a security system for the new proposed city administrative space located at 736 Park North for a term of six months in the amount not to exceed $126,000. Interim city manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the title pretty much says it all. And again, this would be a, for our security system at the new location. This is a state, we'll be pigging back in off of a state contract. A security system will include cameras, access control points with car readers. Also, you know, it would help to make sure we restrict areas where staff would go, the public will go, and staff does recommend approval. This would be also for a, for six months in an amount not to exceed $126,000. And again, this is a quote that we received. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any questions before going into a motion for this item? Okay, I'll take a motion at this time.
A move that we consider for approve a contract with Southern Computer Warehouse Inc., a Georgia statewide contract number 99999-SD-0000172-014, to provide a security system for the new proposed city administrative space located at 736 Park North for a term of six months in amount not to exceed $126,000.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to, to consider approval of the contract with Southern Computer Warehouse Inc., SCW Inc., a Georgia statewide contract number 99999-SD0000172-014, to provide a security system for the new proposed city administrative space located at 736 Park North for a term of six months in and not, in, in an amount not to exceed $126,000. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilwoman Bell?
Uh-uh.
Okay, you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. And then I will defer this to Councilman Carroll for item eight E.
Okay, so this is the Public Works. And I'll recognize, Public Works Resolution, I'll recognize Mayor Burks on this.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Carroll. So as many of you know, or you may not know, that May 19 through the 25th, 2024 is National Public Works Week. And I wanted to make sure as a city, we recognize the hardest work in department in this city. The beautification of everything, the foundation of everything that we do is through Public Works. Our stormwater, everything goes through our Public Works. And we just want to make sure that you understand how valued your team, Marcus, now that you are taking the realm in terms of while Rodney's out, what, what we do, what you do for this city. It is an understatement to say that without you and your team, the beautification of how and what we do from events and everything else, you serve as that backbone. And so as a city, I know internally, staff is doing activities during this week to recognize you. But as the governing body, we wanted to make sure you knew in terms of Public Works in the department, how valued you are to this city and, and to what you do for every resident and every visitor who comes in. Because you make sure in terms of how beautiful this city looks, making sure that the needs are met. When the garbage isn't picked up, you go back out to make sure it's done. You just helped out in terms of our beautification and having trees. But without a doubt, if, if it were not for Public Works, you serve truly as that backbone. And so as a council and as a governing body, we just wanted to say thank you and to properly recognize you with a proclamation. And I just have to make a modification where it says aye, Mayor and Council on this. So counsel, I just wanted to make sure we have the opportunity to recognize you. And I'll turn it back over to Councilman Carroll.
Yes. So do I have a motion for the proclamation, or does anyone have any further comments?
And then I would like to make some comments. This is to adopt a resolution declaring May 19 through 25, 2024, National Public Works Week proclamation.
So talk a little louder about the proclamation that we want to-
Mic, get closer to the mic, yeah, there we go.
So adopting a proclamation that May 19 through the 25th of this year is National Public Works Week. And I would just like to say that Public Works, exactly as the mayor has said, are in many ways the invisible people because they fix things that you may never know about. And they are absolutely critical to the quality of life of our city and every city. And they do soup to nuts, everything. There, if there's a dangerous limb hanging from a tree that could have killed you, it'll be gone because of this. You'll never know about it. If there's an emergency, who are the first people to show up while you're sleeping at home? Public Works. So I could go on about how valuable they are, but I just want us to all remember that, that there are, there are invisible angels out there fixing our city. And you certainly deserve this celebration for this week.
Presiding Officer Carroll, can I be recognized? Okay, thanks. So of course, everybody knows I love Public Works. Thank y'all for setting up, staying up late. But with this being your week from May 19 through the 24th, and people don't know all the work that y'all do, I think, Marcus, we have to put it on you to let you, let y'all plan out what this week looks like and how the community can get involved in the work that y'all do, so they can appreciate y'all more ongoing outside of just this week. So that's what I'm giving to y'all to do, to tell us what y'all going to do for this week.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
There you go, make sure. But I do echo what's been said, I really do appreciate Public Works and all the work that y'all do. So we just want to say thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Can we allow Mr. Marcus to speak?
Marcus, do you want to say anything?
I guess I went too lucky tonight, I had to say something. What I would like to say, I know the guys, I know they thankful, and they know that everyone appreciates them, and they get out there, they work, never complain, they know what they got to do. They all come together, and that's the real magic of it. Everybody works together. It's not a I in it, it's a we. Everybody work together. It's not a one-person team. Even with what I do, I wouldn't be nothing without them. So it's teamwork. It's just like in basketball. You got your point guards, you got your center, you got your forward. If you go out there with all guards, then you know what the odds would be. And I say that to say this, everybody got a position, and you just play it. Everybody plays a part, no matter how much the part, if it's eight, nine different parts, you put them parts together like a puzzle, then you got the complete puzzle, the complete package, what we call a lex luger. So, you know, we appreciate the award, I know they appreciate it, and, you know, we do it because we love serving the community. You can't be in Public Works and not love serving the community, seeing the smiles on-
Thank you, you have very special hearts.
Right. You know, seeing a smile on their face and being able to contribute, being able to help. So I'm going to let them know, and I know they're going to definitely be appreciative. Sometimes it's just the little small things that be the big things. And once again, we appreciate it.
Just thank you for speaking, Marcus. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Are we ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No abstentions, the motion passes. We're ready for the last motion of the night.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Carroll. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.